Hello, everyone, and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. This is our last meeting before summer break, so let's get started. We've got some stuff on there. Olivia, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a consent agenda, minutes from May 25, 2017, and oath to bills and payroll.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. We have two sections in the meeting for interested citizens' input. This is for one now and one at the end of the meeting. Anybody here who'd like to speak before the school committee? Seeing none. We're ready to recognition. Superintendent Clancy, we have a new guest in the room.
We do. I'd like to welcome our incoming principal, Mrs. Michelle Kane. And Michelle has been at Shaker Lane School a number of times and has met staff and students and has been working with Rich. So, really excited about having Michelle start in September. And she's going to be off to a great start because she's had an opportunity to already begin the transition process. So, we're all excited. And on that note, Michelle, would you like to say a couple of words or ...?
Sure.
That microphone won't amplify you, but it ...
We have talked about this. That wasn't a surprise.
No, it was not a surprise. Thank you, Kelly, for those kind words. And thank you, school committee, for having me here. It is exciting. When I was sitting in front of Matthew in the committee, you know, just a few short months ago, I thought this would be a great opportunity. And the fact that I'm here just a couple of months later is very exciting. And as Superintendent Clancy mentioned, I've spent some time at Shaker Lane with Mr. Farady and the kids. And one of the highlights a couple of weeks ago was walking around with Mr. Farady. And he said to a group of first graders, "Do you know who I have with me?" And a little six-year-old, seven-year-old said, "Are you the new Farady?" And we had a good chuckle over that. And I realized after spending that day there that there is no way to replace Mr. Farady. So, I look forward to following in his footsteps, making this transition smooth, and working with everyone to make sure that our kids have a solid social-emotional foundation, as well as being ready educationally for the 21st century. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We have our last, Olivia, last student representative report of the year.
Okay.
It'll be good.
I'll try. I'll convey lots of enthusiasm. Shaker Lane, the first graders had an in-house field trip this week. I only know because my younger sister came home and she was like, "I saw this really cool thing today." And I was like, "Okay, I have an essay due tomorrow, so I'm going to go work on that." Russell Street, they have their field days this week, which are always fun, especially because you don't have to be inside all day, unlike me. The band and chorus concert is at 7:00 tonight. The second grade concert is on the 22nd. The middle school has their country expo Friday from 8:00 to 10:00. And if anyone's around for that, I did that project. And it's something you like, it's your first major research project, so everyone's like super anxious about it when it gets assigned. But it's so neat. People dress up, they make food, and there's lots of pictures and cool things to look at. Eighth grade promotion is on the 22nd as well, from 6:00 to 8:00. National junior first guide induction is tonight. And their end of the year dance is this Friday. High school, we had graduation last week, which went well. But all of us kind of missed the seniors and has kind of put us all in a lethargic mood, given that we have four more days of academic learning. And we have finals starting on the 20th, which is the week of the 19th.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. The next item was former student representative Pat Rocker. He's actually trying to get here from another event that he has to attend. So, we'll leave that agenda item open for at least a moment. Next, we have National Novel Writing Month.
Right. I wanted to take a minute to recognize one of our students, Hannah Lord, who's a junior this year. Last year, she was involved in a National Novel Writing Month competition. And as a result of her efforts, she published her first book called Rubber Soul. And it's for sale on Amazon. And I think this is really cool that we have a junior in our high school at that age who already has a book published. So, excellent program. Special thanks to our high school librarians, Sue Hines, for offering this to our students. And hopefully, in the years to come, we'll have many more novel stuff there. Olivia, or Olivia, Hannah, had an opportunity to go to Shaker Lane the other day and talk to the great tubes about writing. So, it's really nice to have her go up to the schools and share her experiences with our students. So, congratulations, Hannah. And if you're looking for a good book to read, go on Amazon and you can purchase them at a very reasonable price.
Is she going to do book signing?
I bet she could. She signed mine. Do you want to auction this off now?
Save it. We're something someday.
Oh, okay. Olivia had mentioned high school graduation. I thought it was a great event. It always is. But we had a new location this year, and I have to tell you, the location was perfect. I'd like to wish our graduates the best.
You wanted it, and then you're just going to throw it on the floor.
Continue their journey. And it was a real proud moment for staff and community to watch our students march across the stage. And the area was really great. A little windy at times, but it would have been windy no matter where we were. And I thought it was just a great venue. So, those of you who suggested that venue, thank you very much. It was a great decision that we made.
I think it was a large part of it, the students themselves.
It was, yes. Yeah. It was great. Foreign Language Night, I think, Olivia, I'm not sure whether you touched on that or not. It's June 13th. And a couple of other recognitions. I'd like to recognize the Trust Commission for the scholarships that they offer our students and alumni in the community. As we speak this evening, they're presenting $59,000 worth of scholarships to 16 students and alumni. And on top of that, they donated $45,000 to the Littleton Trust, which provides scholarships to our students. So, this year, a total of $104,000 they were able to raise and help our students with their post-secondary education. So, thank you very much, and we certainly appreciate the efforts of all those involved. We also had, for the first time, Littleton High School Unified Track Club. They went to states. And I just had a great time. I'm sure you saw some pictures that were tweeted out. And, you know, special thanks to the coaches and the athletes and the parents for supporting this. It was a great event, and we're looking forward to having many more in the future. Olivia mentioned the country expo already. And the only other one I have is a fellow by the name of Keith Carroll. And of course, our detective Mike Corry worked hard today to move the ticket booth over to the high school. So, I just wanted to give them a shout-out, so to speak. There was a lot of work involved in doing that. It's nice to be able to keep that building in circulation, so to speak. And it will be put to good use at the high school.
That's what they were doing today?
That's what they were doing.
We saw it moving, like, I was in my speech class, and we all looked out the window. We just see like this giant building, like, a little orienting, but ...
Yeah. They made it. The building's in one piece, so that's awesome. And that's the end of my recognitions. And Chairman Fontenot, I think you have one to do tonight. Did Dorothy talk to you?
No.
You should have a certificate there for somebody at your table.
I don't know what I did to deserve that.
Or maybe we have a communication gap here. My apologies.
I guess I feel bad about that, but I don't really know.
Now that it's out in the open, I will just do it myself. And obviously, we will give you something later on.
Have a cookie.
I guess we need to communicate more this time of year. Olivia, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for being our student representative throughout the year. You certainly make great contributions at the school committee table. I know you could be doing a million other things during the night, and our meetings aren't short. And you always manage to stay and give us some great advice. So, thank you so much for what you do. And hopefully, next year, you will be our rep again.
Yes. I talked to, well, first, thank you for having me again. I feel like while I'm here, I'm learn, I learn enough about politics without being like super involved in all of the town's chaos. But I talked to how Dr. Harrington set it up, and so for the school committee student rep, there's five of us. So, when I, and I was elected out of the five to come to the meetings. And so, I've talked to the other four members, and they're like, "Yeah, no, you can just keep doing it." So, I will see you next year.
Excellent. That's great. Thank you so much.
That's pretty much it after next year, right?
Oh, no, after next year, I'm graduating.
So, you're going to stick with the plan?
Yeah, that's ...
She's going to run against you. I think that's it.
We all laugh. It's happened. All right. We have some presentations. The first one, we have Friends of Alumni Field. We're here to talk to us, give us a, send you a presentation on a funding proposal on Alumni Field, Newly Renovated Alumni Field.
Hello. First of all, Olivia, I'm sorry about the Mentos container calamity during your report, so I apologize for that.
It's all good.
It was quite noisy. But hello. Good evening. Thanks for having us back again. I'm Jackie Segal, and I'm here for the Friends of Alumni Field. Like I said, we've been here before, but we're here to formally introduce ourselves and to share with you a proposal for Phase One of a two-phase sponsorship program for the Alumni Field facility. So, I'll read it right here. The Friends of Alumni Field, we are a nonprofit organization that assembled for the singular purpose of raising money and creating fundraising mechanisms that would help to offset for the town of Littleton, the cost for caring, maintaining, and improving the Alumni Field athletic facility. It really came about when we were sitting through AFRAC meetings and hearing the sensitivity to what it would cost to care and maintain for such a sophisticated field and athletic facility. So, we decided to step up, and that is our singular mission, is to help to offset those costs. So, we organized sort of informally before Fall Town Meeting. And again, sitting through those meetings and hearing some of the sensitivities around maintain, maintain the field, we kind of looked around at the skill set around the table and decided that we could make a go at creating a fundraising group that could actually make a difference. So, we worked under LABA for some time, LABA being the boosters. And they were great. And we partnered with them to do a couple of fundraising events in the fall that were very successful, very lucrative. And with LABA's encouragement, poor Cindy Napoli, she must have asked me to go and form a 501(c)(3) 100 times. We finally got around to it in March, and we formed the 501(c)(3). I'm serving as the president. Gillian Shaw is the treasurer. And you can see, we've got a great group of directors representing coaches, parents, grandparents, volunteers, entrepreneurs, and business people in town. As we've meandered through town and kind of just figuring out what we can do and what we need to do to be successful and who we need to speak with, we've kind of made a bunch of connects throughout town. We've met with, obviously, AFRAC. We were like groupies at those meetings. PMBC, we've spoken with, the school committee. We've been here a couple of times. With the public schools, we've met with both Mr. Clancy and Mr. Lynn. And of course, we've worked with the boosters folks. So, our fundraising goals are to raise, on average, $50,000 a year to eventually offset the cost of replacing the infield turf primarily, which is estimated at $600,000. This $50,000 number was a number that was brought to town meeting. It was a line item in the proposed budget. And I, like I said, it's all Mike Fontenella's fault that we're at the $50,000 goal, but that's okay. We like a challenge. But the goal is to create these programs and mechanisms so that eventually we have almost a handbook that we hand over to the next generation of Friends of Alumni Field and say, "Here's the program. Here's how to do it, and here's how you can keep doing it successfully." So, we want to make it fun, to keep everybody engaged, so that we stay engaged, frankly. So, how are we going to do this? It's a phased approach. Like I said, we're here to talk about Phase One tonight, but basically, we're looking at $50,000 being raised with achievable incremental goals that keeps everybody, like I said, interested and engaged. And we know that we need to be realistic about how much we can do. And some years, we're going to probably do better than others, but we are looking at $50,000. Doing so through a combination of events, like the 100 Good Men Event that a lot of you in this room attended, Crawl the Point, which is our spring fundraiser that we'll be announcing shortly, our Buy a Brick Program, which we just, I think this week, this, tonight, we hit $18,000 in 10 days. It's crazy. And sponsorship. So, Phase One is what we'd like to talk to you about tonight, but it's a two-phased sponsorship program. So, this, thank God, is on the screen because I can't read without my glasses on this. So, I'll kind of read it. But this is the sponsorship program in a nutshell. We're looking to not do little ads. We're looking for high visibility, high value, high-ticket price sponsorship programs and opportunities that are leveraging what we have structurally at the facility with some creative marketing activities that make becoming a sponsor at Alumni Field a very easy business-based decision for a corporate sponsor. Obviously, all the corporate sponsors would comply with all school and town requirements and the rules about who can be a sponsor for a town or school event or on school or town properties. As a group, we have a keen interest in making sure it doesn't end up looking like crazy town. So, we're not, we're not looking to just take the money and run and have a multitude of signs. And we're looking for a very sophisticated approach, a programmatic approach, a very planned approach to bringing sponsors into the facility that maintains the integrity of the facility and the integrity of what we have envisioned for the renovated Alumni So, what do we have to work with? We've got Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One, which is what, again, what we're here about tonight, is a functional program. It's the ticket booth, the amenities building, the media booth, and the scoreboard. All buildings and all structures that need to be named anyway. So, this is a way of combining what we need to do, which we would need to order signs so that we don't have a bunch of anonymous buildings on the facility and then have somebody else pay for it, quite frankly. Phase Two is looking at the softball field, jet field, the dugouts and fencing, the infield and light poles. And again, that's Phase Two, and really not anything that we could accomplish while the facility's being constructed. So, we've got the structures, but in order to make it, again, an easy business-based decision for corporate sponsors, because these are not, you know, small dollar-figure packages that we have assembled, they're high-ticket items. So, we needed to make sure that we made it, again, a good business decision. So, we have constructed packages that have, you know, some components of all of these, whether it's a t-shirt toss with all the logos. We have a game MVP program set up, halftime sponsors. Some sponsors will be automatic sponsors of 100 Good Men, the spring fundraiser, you know, ads, just general visibility, social media, you know, great way of getting exposure. So, those are all the possible components. So, Phase One packages, we got really creative with the names, platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. I wanted blue, gold, and white and, you know, tiger, but it didn't pass. It would be one platinum, two gold, a silver, and a bronze. Most terms are two years, again, making this an easy point of entry for anybody who would want to be a sponsor with us. We might look at that and decide that four years, it makes more sense, and it's more, less administration, less going out and finding, you know, big-ticket sponsors. But for right now, in order to, you know, gain some momentum, we're looking at two years. They're going to require signed contractual agreements, and we're going to ask town council to work with us to make sure that they're all done right and that the town is in agreement with it. And we would manage all aspects of the contract. So, we're not asking the town to get involved other than to maybe give us access to the field to install a sign or install a brick. So, what does this look like? It doesn't look like that. So, that is exactly what we don't want it to look like. We know that there is some, everybody's been to those fields, and there's some concern that this is what we were looking to do. I'm here to say, that's not what we're looking to do. That is the absolute polar opposite of what we're hoping to accomplish at the field. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear. So, sponsorship signage, we are looking to brand this facility. So, we don't want to have multitudes of looks and signs, different signs and different designs. So, we are looking to brand the athletic facility. And that means that we would be, you know, pre-planning placement of signs. We would have templates that the school committee and the town or whomever else selectmen would be approving ahead of time, designed by professional designers. And we would also be working with the sign companies to get them all designed and installed by the sign company. Again, not asking for the town to jump in on this. We're happy to manage all of this. This is my disclaimer, that all presented sign designs are notional. Professional graphic artists will provide design layouts for review and approval. In the spirit of transparency, I've done all of these on PowerPoint on my desktop, but just to give you guys an idea of what we're talking about. The first set of signs that we're talking about are roof signs. They are, they would be a permanent sign that's mounted on the building and that we would use a customizable, weather-tolerant wrap. So, I don't know if you guys are familiar with wraps. But the wrap, we would be able to take the sign down, have a graphic designer plan it, and put this wrap on it that is able to be easily removed and easily replaced as we, you know, we contract with different sponsors. We would do the design and layout. Again, it would be a template. So, it's, and you'll see when we get to it, it's basically sliding their logo in and out and just maintaining our functional signage on that. And the sponsor would provide the logo, we'd provide the specs. And again, they won't be, you know, special offers. There'll be no price tags. There won't be any, you know, promoting particular products. It will be simply logos. So, I apologize for this, but this is what I could get from the plans. But this is the ticket booth, or it will be the ticket booth. So, that is the ticket booth, looking at it straight on. The, where the tiger paw is, is a rolled window, I believe, right, the metal window. And this sign is just "Welcome to Alumni Field." And this sign is kind of a nice replacement since I believe we've taken the welcome monument out of the plans, right? To conserve money? We took the welcome sign out of the plans?
The colors, though.
Yeah. And the headstone, right? So, that's out?
Yeah.
So, this is a nice way of just offering a "Welcome to Alumni Field." Buttons and bows, which is Gillian Shaw, our treasurer's business, so I just used her logo for this. You can see that functionally, it's a welcome sign. It's where you go to buy your tickets, and the, there's less emphasis on the sponsor, more emphasis on the function, and it's pretty clean, streamlined. It's, you know, it's fairly simple. These are two options, and again, this is PowerPoint, so that's a disclaimer. But we're saying here, they're clean, they're streamlined, they're functional. We can do something that's very simple with a plain background, or we can have some design elements put into it, like the tiger. Just some feedback from businesses, they don't really like the tiger. They prefer to have the basic background because it doesn't compete with their logos. And this, I blew it. I meant to put one sign on this, and I did a, I copied my slide. This kills me. So, this is the amenities building, which you'll see for the signage purposes, I use stadium services because frankly, I could never type amenities without having it, needed to be spell-corrected. An amenities building is just sort of an odd term to be using on a day-to-day basis. So, we went with stadium services. That's just up in the air. That's just for this. And stadium services would be the snack shack, the boosters window where they're selling apparel, there's restrooms, there's storage. But for the purpose of servicing visitors, we would have the snack shack or food and drink. visitors, we would have the snack shack or food and drink apparel and restrooms on the signage. And the thinking about, thinking behind putting the signs where they're currently placed, which is not in both those places, this one was meant to show it on top of the peak there, was to make it visible for anybody visiting because this is not only to service the multi-sport infield, it's also to support jet field. And then there's some thinking around having the building open when the track is having meets. So it's making it visible. And it also permits the boosters or the youth programs to put some signage below the roof line as well. And that's actually, oop, and that was the other one just by itself there. We can move on. Again, here is the signs. It hangs very nicely with the welcome sign. It's branded. It has a similar look and feel. It's clean. It's not emphasizing the sponsors, and it's emphasizing the function, stadium services. This is, back to the ticket booths. So this is the sponsor board that we're proposing. This is the west-facing side of the ticket booth. So when folks are exiting the facility, they would see this side of the building. This is a low-risk, low-price-point way to entice sponsors to try, to dip their toe in the sponsorship pool to see if they would want to do this with us. This is a very simple, again, clean design. It dovetails and is branded with the other signage in the facility that we are proposing. And again, it's just a nice way, in a fairly lucrative way. It would have no more than 12 signs. Those signs would be set up so that these, they would be able to be removed and replaced. Those are one-year contracts, so they would be needed, they would need to be able to be replaced fairly easily. So we're either doing something magnetic or something that would have grommets that we could hang the sign on. We're just going to make sure that the kids or little devils don't steal them. So we're working on that. Again, this is another one. It would, we could have a family, they could just, the Moran family might want to spend the money and put a placement there, and that would be an opportunity for them to do so. Or again, a company that just wants to get, it might be a good small business opportunity so we don't leave them out of the sponsorship pool. The media booth, this looks nothing like the media booth. I just grabbed it because it had flags, it had tiger paws on it, so forgive me. But you get the idea. That, where that is mounted on that particular photo is a solid fence, but it's not dissimilar to what we have in the making. We've got a media booth that's got a filming platform on top of it like it always had with the fence. So this would be mounted to the fence. Again, home of the tigers. It's a way of just, you know, home of the tigers. And the sponsorship is a very small aspect of it, and that did not transpire well onto this one. So sorry that looks kind of funky. But I think you get the point. And our scoreboard. So the scoreboard, last I heard, and Mike and Chuck, Chuck left, we're keeping the old scoreboard?
They're evaluating.
So last I spoke with Gail, they said if we keep the old scoreboard, which is the presumption that we've made here, they were going to provide a frame for it. They're going to reframe it and provide us with that bottom half. There'd be enough to put, you know, four decent-sized logos up there. We can sell one for a bigger price point or four. And it would be no more than four Littleton Tiger sponsors on the scoreboard. But I want to point out that the scoreboard is a perfect example that we already allow corporate sponsors at Alumni Field because that is actually the Dasani scoreboard. So we've done it. We had no influence on the design of that, but we've done it, and it's almost probably gone unnoticed for years that that's the Dasani scoreboard in Littleton. So there's the branding. So it's, again, from a PowerPoint, but that's essentially what we're saying. The message here is that all the signage would be clean, consistent, functional, and branded. And then anything that we would do beyond this in phase two would grow out of this. So everything would be a corporate identity program, if you will, for the Alumni Field facility. Phase two, we talked a little bit earlier, but interior fencing and that Dunkin' Donuts sign, you can see that's how simple we're talking. The initial thinking is no more than six, maybe three on the first baseline, three on the third baseline, or five in the outfield. You know, that's a conversation for another time. Spray painting, the infield corners on the, the infield corner, the corners on the infield turf, that's another very lucrative sponsorship opportunity for us. And then the light poles, you know, and that goes out, very similar to the 300. So what is this all translating into? A lot of money. So we're not here, and hopefully it's refreshing to hear, that we're not here to ask the school committee for money. We're actually asking to provide the school committee money. We basically need to know, do you want the money? Because right now, the way we're looking at it from a 10-year projection standpoint, if we were to sell all of our sponsorship packages, which really are five for the most part, there's five key areas, and we run programs similar to what we're doing with the brick program. Actually, the brick program is incorporated into those numbers with a decreasing revenue for those over the years because we know that that's going to decline. Our events, we didn't even, we didn't even calculate that the events would grow bigger. We just wanted to see minimally and conservatively what could we end up with over the course of 10 years. And we're talking a half million dollars. So a half million dollars pretty much is paying the whole enchilada. So that is a big chunk of money, a big contribution that we are standing here saying that we're willing to go for and that we think that it's very achievable. We've got a skill set around the table of business people and marketers that feel very strongly that this is something that we can achieve. So that's, that's the number that we're looking at. It's kind of scary when I see it up here, but it's, we're already fast-tracking on this. We're pretty happy and pretty confident. So the next steps is we just need to know whether or not you want us to move forward with this. Are you comfortable with what we're saying? Are we, have we made it clear that everybody would have signed off on this, that everybody would have, you know, there'd be no surprises? You would know exactly what to expect when you visited Alumni Field? And you endorse our efforts here? If so, our next steps are to move our conversations. We've had some really good conversations with some big corporate sponsors. And so we are, we've been kind of, hang on, we're waiting to get approval. So we can't ask them to hang on too much longer. We need to get our town legal review of our contracts and our sponsorships, and then we need to start moving forward with sign templates. And they need to happen pretty quickly because it's June 8. This is the last time you guys are meeting, and we've got a September 1 target date. So a lot of things have to happen pretty quickly. A lot of people are willing to give up a lot of their time and their summers to do this stuff. So I would appreciate if we could get an answer tonight. And thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I appreciate it. You're right. I mean, you guys have gone through a significant effort in terms of the process just to get to this point. You've kept us informed, not only just us, but the PMBC, the administration, and the AFRAC committee. It is an ambitious program, but you've clearly quantified how to get there. And it seems like it's doable. It certainly is not something that hasn't happened many times in many different places. As a matter of fact, the examples you showed, you could do more. If we really had the appetite to do more, we could do more. I think we were talking to Mike Lynn. He said in Shrewsbury, they literally have a Dunkin' Donuts logo in the middle of the field. That was their decision, put that there. But the guy paid like, literally like six figures for that right to do that. And that's, yeah, that's not what we're proposing. You know, we're kind of in the middle of that. And I appreciate the way you portrayed it. But I really appreciate the fact that you're here in front of us and that you've organized yourselves to this point. And it helps us evaluate what we're getting ourselves into. And I think we can, you know, have a good debate tonight and then have a, see if we can come to a decision. Given that, Matt, do you have any initial comments or thoughts?
You know, thanks for all that you put in. I think it's actually, you've kind of done some problem solving for us as far as thinking of how are we going to pay for the upkeep. I'm in total support of the advertising. I don't think it's tacky. I think it's very well. Your ideas are very respectful to the field. And just a question on the logos on the field that we talked about, how often would those have to be updated if they're on the?
Well, the paint lasts two years. Honestly, the paint, the paint that goes down lasts two years, whether or not we decide to make that a one-year or two-year or five-year and we repaint.
Lasts that long, though?
Yeah. So they're very lucrative. They've done very well in other fields. I think we would have to look and analyze what we need, how much money we need to make, and how much money we think we can make off of it. At that point, we'll have better ticket numbers and stuff that we can decide how much that should be and how long those terms should be.
And the sponsor would pay to put those on?
Oh, yeah. No. So we've built enough profit margin into all of this that we're banking money and we're having everything paid for. So.
Just to clarify, so this is, the spray painting is on the turf?
It's on the turf. It's on the synthetic turf.
I thought you were talking, it was on jet. But that's fine.
No, on jet, we'd be mowing it all the time. So.
Chuck, do you have a comment?
I just have a comment relative to the paint. The paint, when you, when you paint the numbers and the hash marks and the striping of the field, that's, that lasts two to three years depending upon play. In the areas that I believe you proposed to sort of step out, without a lot of foot traffic, you're likely to get more.
We can get, right. But I think they're only guaranteed for two years. So we just have to see.
Sell it for two years.
What our climate does to it.
Just so we're on the same page, that's a phase two.
Yes.
Type of thing.
So we're not even talking about that. Like, we don't even want to look at that right now. We need to get through, this is not even reasonable during, with the construction that's going on. So we need signs for the building, so that makes sense for us to look at signs. And we can, we can sell that.
And just the bricks we're selling, I think the, for the initial bricks going down June 12 for the orders?
June 12 is the deadline for getting those and so that we can get those installed. So it's installation.
And how those would be added to people who have the opportunity in coming years to also?
Yes. We're going to sell those bricks twice a year in the fall during, we take capitalizing on the foot traffic in, on the Friday night football games. And then we will sell it in the spring to kind of capitalize on graduation and, you know, coaches' gifts and teacher gifts and stuff. So we're going to do that twice a year. But the push right now for June 12 is to get it in for the opening day. So they'll all be in the Alumni Field Plaza, the entrance plaza. And so that's what we're pushing for now. And we don't, that, we were hoping to get those installed underneath the contract. So we don't have to pay the extra installation on that. So if they're going to be putting down the bricks anyway, that's also, we're trying to get those in because installation on those starts July 24.
Sounds good.
Thanks so much for the presentation and all the work on this. You know, it would have been super easy to get the field passed and then to sort of give up there. So, you know, having the commitment from all these volunteers to, you know, supporting it in perpetuity is, it's really nice to see. I am supportive of the proposal that you guys gave to us. I am glad that we're taking this in phase one and phase two because I'm not as convinced yet that phase two, you know, the phase two work needs to get done as quickly or should be as robust. So I like the idea of doing the four signs because we need signs anyway, and then letting it play out and seeing, you know, take a step back, take a deep breath, and then see what we, where we go from there. Because, you know, I think a lot of people voted for the Alumni Field because it was going to be a hallmark of the athletics in the town. And what I would not want to see is, you know, for people to be distracted for why they're actually there, which is for graduations and to see the students play, you know, their sports. So I don't want it to look like the examples that you showed. So, you know, I think everyone's in agreement with that. I think you're going to be hard-pressed to find people who disagree with that. So I'm supportive of the four, you know, the proposal for the four different signs.
Must-haves, right.
Yeah. I, if, I have a couple of quick questions. One is just for timeline for that. So given that this is our last meeting of the year, when would we, when would you anticipate that we would have an opportunity to review either the design or the final product or anything like that?
We could get designs emailed, because we can do that via email by the end of June.
So maybe we?
Well, so remind me, policy guru, about exactly how the, we wrote, I think we wrote the policy in a way that once the school committee generally approves a concept like this.
Kelly can sign off on the details.
I'm wondering if in this case, though, we would, you know, this is a very high-profile example of this. So we may, it may be, it may be, like, I think I, my preference would be that the full board votes on it.
We can certainly consider that, and we can certainly call a special meeting with, you know, following open meeting law. That's not a problem. I think what I'm envisioning is that, you know, we trust the administration. We will see it. There's no question that we will see it. And, you know, if, once we've seen it, if it's communicated to the chair that there's concern from the members, then we will definitely consider having a special meeting.
And I think.
But if, if, if there is no concern.
If there's no surprise, then it's what you, you know.
Right, exactly. We feel like, the checks and balances are there. And it won't happen in a vacuum. There's no question.
Right. The way we have it, and I think we, the way we've worked with all of the policy issues with the administration is that we give the superintendent quite a bit of leeway. And his discretion, if he feels that the decision may have a broader community impact than just his decision of which, he would request.
Yeah, and you could bring.
He would request the committee discuss the whole thing. You have to be very careful about you sending us things, and we can't comment.
Right.
On it.
The open meeting.
So.
Right.
There. So it would basically be information to us, primarily Kelly would be your interface with it. And, and we would alert him that we would need a.
Correct.
A meeting on it.
And we wouldn't say why, we would just say we want.
Because we can't do that, or it'd be violation of the operating law.
Right.
So the other question that I have is, I assume that you've got a plan, so coming just from like the oversight, so you've got the board of directors there. At some point, it doesn't have to happen now, but at some point, I'd like to learn a little bit more about the structure of that committee and the board of directors, who's going to be overseeing it, whether the other members, whether they are just sort of asked to serve on it because of the role that they're currently in, or whether there are earmarked positions, for example, from somebody from the parts wreck or from lava or anything like that. You know, it just might be something going into the future. You might want to talk about having reserved seats for people. So you're ensuring that you're getting representation from everybody, not with this core group, but maybe 10, 15 years later, might be worth looking at. And then also, just the plan, you know, talking about a lot of money. So I assume that there's going to be adequate invest, you know, I assume this money's going to be invested and not just sitting, you know, in a bank account. So not for, for now, but just given that it's, you're dealing with the school property, I would like in the future just to make sure that we've done our due diligence with the organization and the money.
But this money will be in a Friends of Alumni Field account?
Right.
Run and managed by us?
Yep.
Okay.
Totally understand. You know, it's our responsibility, though, just because it's a partnering organization, to make sure that we're overseeing it as well properly because it's all money driven from our property and our fields and things like that. So, you know.
I have a suggestion on that when we cycle around through.
Okay, great. Yeah. And so, you know, that's in concept, I'm supportive of it and intend to vote in favor of it today. And then just some other considerations that I'd like to talk about in the future.
Thanks.
Chuck?
No, I think that was my primary concern, is just the structure of it.
Great.
So in the tradition of I always go through everything fairly fine, I've got a bunch, several questions. I would like, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. And I figure I'll just provide my input on the different pieces here on it. I'm a little concerned about the rooftop signs. It's a little bit more intrusive than I thought we were talking about. When you go to the amenities building, you got a better rendering here. That area under the peak.
We'll look at the one with the one. Yeah.
Rather than a rooftop sign, what about under the peak area there that's on it in terms of, one, it pulls it off the roof line of which, if we try to install that after they build it, we've got the, you know, the roof integrity issues with the shingle, the roofing and pieces there. But I'm just suggesting that, you know, I'm a little bit more comfortable with it not being quite as, as intrusive as you there. You got, you got the peak on the other side that you could perhaps put signs on both sides, but so that one's facing the jet field and the other's facing the.
I think the challenge that we faced with determining whether or not we could leverage that peak was that that then, this is a multi-function building, so it's no longer the quote-unquote snack shack. It is now the snack shack, the boosters booth, it is the bathrooms, it's storage. So to put a sign within that peak names the snack shack almost. So in order to make it visible for visitors, to make the user experience visiting the facility a good one and an easy one, looking around, where is the bathroom? We, that's why we chose to put it on top of it because it names the building or it indicates functionally what the building delivers versus putting it under the peak, which would be right over the quote-unquote snack shack windows.
Like I said, I understand your, your side of it there. I'm just saying, I'm a little concerned about how that one is a little bit more intrusive than I thought of the general signage in the areas there. One of your samples, and maybe you changed it in your thing here, I don't mind sponsored by, but support our sponsors, again, I think is a little bit more than, than where I was comfortable with in terms of us plugging a product versus just saying that they're sponsoring the area. You may have changed it on, I have the earlier draft.
It's on the amenities rooms.
Right. Yeah. Support our sponsors. I'm more comfortable with sponsored by. Right, yeah, support our sponsors. I'm more comfortable with sponsored by, you know, just as a language there. And, and like you said, don't, don't interpret my comments as I'm not supportive of the.
No, I'm not. I think it's great feedback. Thank you.
I wouldn't provide you feedback in terms of where.
Appreciate it.
You know, since I shepherded the advertising policy through the three and a half years it took to develop it.
That's what we're here for, for feedback, so.
Lot of twizzlers, and well, no, and, and we had quite a bit of input from the community about not wanting any of our facilities to turn into, you know, a, a big advertising.
And we couldn't agree more.
Yeah, you know, so there. I like the signboards. Let me just find the next one here. I know it's, on the media booth there, again, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, that discreet sign there. I think I just need a better rendering because it's hard to, you know.
You don't like that rendering? Do you have a problem with that?
It looks like Soldier's Field Road.
Honestly, it's like orange, black, and yellow. It's gone awful. It's like, what can I do with this thing on PowerPoint?
I'd have a look to see if we got PDFs that you can blow up.
Yeah, you know, and I haven't even, I don't even have a copy of what ours look like, so that's the best I could do, and it was an entire pause on top, called it a day.
Conceptually, I like that because it's tucked in as part of the roof line, not a billboard on top of the roof.
That's actually the fencing on top, so I don't know what we decided for fencing, yeah.
You know, a thing there, but I mean, I, in terms of that style of it, it fit in nicely with the thing without a, without a billboard on top.
Right, and I think that that's, that's the appropriate and sort of customary place for that. And it, you're in the field. So again, I think that the thinking, and I know you have acknowledged that you know where we're coming from, was just to use it as a functional marker.
Yeah. Let me see. And then on the phase two one, again, recognizing that that's not where the thing is, but I got comments here. The infield corner, I'm not opposed, but I haven't actually seen what they typically look like in some of the things there on it.
Like a scale rendering would help at some point.
Yeah, next year.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I'd like to provide you for feedback for you there. The interior fencing there, so like right now, we gave baseball approval for game day signs that they could put up during their games and then take them down. Mainly for two things, not just to leave them there for intrusive advertising for other people that are using the fields because they're near the schools. And as well as the ongoing maintenance issue, we don't want to be responsible for maintaining signs. You've taken care of part of that there. But the other part that was sensitive to any placement of permanent signage like this is exposure to the students during the normal school day. We don't want them, you know, they'd have to be kind of positioned so that they're not classroom visible or, or things like that because we're, we're trying to, again, that was a big concern from the community about blasting students with advertising.
Totally agree.
During the school day.
I think once we see that field and the way it all ends up being oriented, then we can have that. So that's kind of the other rationale behind phase two. You know, I think it's great feedback. I'm, I'm agreeing. I'm just kind of talking out loud myself.
Yeah, and then the light poles, again, I, I think we talked about that when you first came, what, several months ago, on the first thing there. But the light poles, again, it, it's the permanent aspect of it. You know, game day is one thing, having them up all the time while the students are either using the field for other events or walking between the different things there. A little concerned about, again, just it being blatant advertising for, for folks there on it. So I'd probably want to visit that as we finalize your plans in that area on it.
And just as a point, what we've been talking about is would be one advertise. It wouldn't be, again, going through with multitudes of, of messages being sent to you.
But again, the, the ones that are a little bit more like that, again, feedback was, was a little hesitant from folks and, and I think we need to understand exactly what we're, we're looking at there. And then the last one, and I think it follows up a little bit with what our vice chair, who throws his placard away.
Vice vice chair.
Is, I would like to see us figure out how to formalize the agreement that we're allowing you to use the field for, you know, for this, for this purpose here. I think that's the tie that we don't have right now here, because you will be using, you know, sort of the name of our, our facility for an independent corporate, nonprofit corporation's purpose there. So we need to, I think, have some kind of contractual relationship authorizing you to do that and spelling out the terms of what you're responsible to us for, rather than just our agreement at the meeting here. I would also get a little concerned about, and maybe it's, it's a little misplaced, but once you start racking up significant funds, you know, there's, there's a liability within the 503, 501 in terms of managing that money, but also, you know, that we got to codify the commitment back to the town of what that funds are being used for on it. Raised on our, you're raising them, but we're allowing you to use the facility to do that. I would like to maybe see investigating, setting up some type of dedicated revolving fund within the town that you can make an annual donation so that all that money doesn't necessarily accumulate outside of, outside of the town there. So nothing personal, but in three years, if somebody writes themselves a check and then disappears with it, you know, there's, there's a lot of legal liabilities or lost opportunities that I don't like to always focus on the negative there on it. But it would also be a check and balance in terms of us making sure that this program is progressing as the way everybody's envisioned it to do. You know, and I'd like to maybe see.
Acknowledging that this is still an independent organization that's fundraising to benefit you.
Right, but maybe what you, we could look, I would be more comfortable with would be is, is that you do your fundraising thing. We have an annual review of, you know, how things are going type of thing there. I would like to see, you know, some portion of the funds transferred to a dedicated revolving fund with some retention by use for your own operating and, and other pieces there.
Oh, absolutely. I think we would have our legal counsel get involved with that.
Yeah, you know, I'm just suggesting that kind of structure to formalize what the agreement is here because this is a little different than the other independent group, which is the track group, which is not doing any sponsorship within the track itself. You know, they're just raising funds and, and holding them themselves, which, of which, again, we don't have a formalized agreement with them that I think we're trying to figure out where we, you know, we're kind of a little late on that one.
Yeah, it's a good point. I think probably really it's an opportunity to, to visit both of them.
Yeah.
And we probably should. I'm not exactly sure how much funding the LTO is raising. It's not insignificant, but I don't think it's anywhere in the neighborhood of what we're projecting here. I think your point is 100% valid, but I also think, and I know you'll, you'll agree too, I'm sure that there are multiple variations that counsel would say, oh, yeah, you can do this, you can do this, or you can do that, you know, and we'll evaluate and figure.
Yeah, I'm not here to over-engineer it, but I'm, I'm suggesting that I think we do need to get a path to, to formalize the agreement.
We've actually spoke with other organizations similar to ours. We were very closely connected with the Chelmsford boosters. And so they have some really good counsel and experience in, in working with the town. And we will, we've been bringing them into our discussions, and we'll bring it into the discussions with the school committee.
And so I suggested months ago, I think maybe it was the first time you were here or another presentation, that we should have a formal MOU between.
I think it's got to be more than a MOU. I think it's got to be a contract.
Yeah, and so I don't know if that's moved along, because it actually, I mean, that should probably be done before, concurrent with the signing.
Yeah, I think we should do it concurrent, but I think that we can definitely let them go and start doing their work because the money that we're talking about now isn't, isn't material enough to worry about.
I, I don't think anything that I suggested is, is a, is a blockage to progressing. I'd just like to make sure that we.
Ultimately end up there.
It needs to be done certainly well before next year's report at this time on how we did, and really should probably be done, you know, ideally be done as we're opening the facility, I would think.
Yeah, it needs to be done soon because it's going to have to speak to how the money's used, you know, if the money is used to further maintain the property. That's all going to be in there because again, we're the ones, there's got to be procedures for them coming before us to say, we want to invest this money in X, Y, and Z the field, and we have to give permission for that, so.
I think that we can, you guys have counsel, we have counsel, the town has counsel, and I think that that, they're the pros from Dover. Let them get to work on it. Obviously, we, nobody will sign anything that they're not comfortable with, but I think we can get that done easily enough. Like I say, I, they're probably going to say, yeah, we were waiting for you. Here you go, you know, these are your options if we can figure it out. So entirely valid and, and needs to get done in, you know, reasonably short order, but I don't think it needs to be done tomorrow, and it certainly doesn't need to preclude you guys from getting underway.
So.
And I think also, as part of that as well, is, is to figure out who is going to, because we're not running the facility, we're funding it. So we would ask the school committee and the town to come to us and propose what we are going to fund.
Right.
And that it complies with, you know, we have put together for bylaws as to what we're going to fund and, and what we see as targets for funding because we'll be dispersing that money.
And will there be, I mean, this might be something we need to talk about between us, a backup plan because I'm not saying the association is going to fall to pieces as soon as it started, but in the case, you know, 10 years, we don't have you guys around to run it anymore.
Right.
How are we going to pay for it at that point?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point. You know, I think that in terms of any capital investment that we make, obviously we have an opportunity here to, that we wouldn't necessarily have with a building, but there has to be planning.
And I, I think that we can't, you know, I'm not here saying I'm paying for the whole thing. I'm here to say I'm helping and that the town has to.
Ultimately, it's the town has to pay for it. So what they're doing is to just try and mitigate those costs. But ultimately, the town should be expecting that we're paying for it. When you take that vote, this is to mitigate those costs.
And I think that you have to analyze.
So it has to be part of our plan.
Exactly.
Right.
You got to analyze it year by year, and, and hopefully it's all going to be really good news. But if it's not, if there's a hiccup or a bump in the road, if the economy tanks and you can't find sponsors.
Right.
Because you're talking about two years, and you got to roll it over every two years, there might be a gap where we just weren't as successful, we didn't meet the projections. And then as a town, you know, we need to have a discussion. Do we want to, you know, at the fifth year, do we start funding it as a town, putting money aside into a revolving fund because we know we have this coming up? We may or may not. We may not have the luxury of doing that. But it's a discussion that has to be had, and this will just be a part, a factor in that overall discussion that should take place. If these guys just say, forget it, we decided we don't want to do it, which is your prerogative, then the town would still be going through the, a process. There's no question. Or they should be.
You know, so, so with that, I don't want to say I'm supportive of the, of the proposal to move forward. I just provided those as context and background and some minor tweaks that I'd like to see.
Thank you.
My only comment is, I mean, these guys basically asked all the right questions, and I'm in line with them in terms of their point of view about it. It was a significant, a significant part of the debate on the whole Alumni Field was maintenance and replacement because it is, it does need to be replaced. It's not like a field, a natural grass field where you're basically replacing it every year by putting seed fertilizer down. This has a, an end date. We don't know exactly what it is. It depends on how we use it and things like that, and how we take care of it on an annual basis. But we always knew that, you know, if we're going to build it, we want it for 20 or 30 years, and the carpet's only going to last 10 to 12. So this is inevitable, and we need to have it. And the, the, the idea that the town wasn't going to be, you know, having to support this was addressed and how we were going to support it. You guys came forward and it was a, I know there are people that voted yes because they felt confident that there was going to be some community input, that people were going to volunteer to support it because you guys did such a great job of conveying that message, and you got in front of all the right people to do it. And I appreciate to the nth degree that you guys are following through, and that it wasn't just political cautioning and, and expedient to get a vote that we wanted. It was, you guys meant it, and you're here, ready to put your, your boots on the ground and get it done. I'm very excited. You know, I don't want to be overly optimistic, but I, I have full confidence that we're going to, if we don't get to $50,000 a year, we're going to get to a good number, a very healthy number, and we're all going to.
If we made it halfway there, we still got a quarter.
Exactly. That's the thing. There's really no, no, right, right, exactly. So I'm entirely supportive of this. I think we do just need to keep an eye on the checks and balances, and there's a few more Ts and Is to cross, to dot and cross, but we'll get it done, and, you know, we're at this point.
And then we can just ask Kelly on our behalf to start looking at the legal aspects that we need to.
And I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier. I have one, just one more comment to make. The question about review that I have for school committee review is not just about the design, but I, I think it would be really important to make sure that, I think we would want to have input if the interest in the price, the dollar amount come in dramatically lower than we expect. You know, like, as a school committee, we may decide that for $5,000, it's not worth doing that, you know what I mean? So I think it would just be important that, you know, if, if you guys come to us and say, you know, we've had to really lower the price because nobody's taking, you know, the bait on this, that would be something that would want to be in the MOU type thing is to say like, we actually don't want, we don't want it then if it's, you know, dramatically.
We don't, we don't want to do it either, honestly. We would punt.
No, yeah, and it's not, again, none of these are criticisms, just like, you know, total.
No, I completely agree in this.
And so maybe it would be that in the contract, we set out minimums, like, it could be something as simple as that, like, you know, anything structured, anything permanently fixed to a structure, you know, it has to be a minimum of $25,000, and anything above that, you don't have to come to us, anything, you know, something like that.
And I don't think it's going to be as cut and dry as that because it, it's not just structures. We're packaging things. And so we've got different events, we've got different marketing, so it, it's not, it's not, I don't think it's going to be as easy to carve it out like that, but I, I hear what you're saying.
And I'm very optimistic that that's not going to be a problem. We're going to get.
And nothing's, nothing's going to, we have the final say. Nothing's going to go in until we approve it.
Yep.
And we'll know the money and the, the aesthetic, the size, the placement, and the, the money. And then we'll be able to make a decision about whether or not we're going to accept that.
And part of this, quite frankly, is, is, is not this board today here. It's the board in three years, and then who your replacement is.
Right.
You know, if you cycle out there, is, we, we need checks and balances that we're always on the same sheet of music with it. It's a, it's a future boards and the future.
An ongoing relationship.
Pieces there that, you know, if there's a divergence, we need made ways of making sure that that stays in track.
At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, Mr. DeCoste.
The bricks are part of this proof. If this were to be approved tonight, the bricks are part of that, correct?
So why don't we, so my understanding is that the motion tonight would be made for, to approve phase one of this proposal, which would include.
With superintendent's approval of all designs.
Which would include four signs on structures plus the buy a brick program. And then included in that, do we want to include the other things like the T-shirt, you know, all like the little fringe benefits of being the platinum and gold?
Again, I don't, I don't think we need to approve anything like that right now. I think we just need to give them the direction and the superintendent communicating with the school committee, we will decide on everything as it's presented to us, when it's presented to us, and we can go thumbs up or thumbs down on any aspect of it.
So then I would make a, a motion for initial approval to. We can, I can, what do you, do you?
I just want to jot one down here, so let me.
Phase one approval.
Yeah.
What's that?
No, I.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hold on a second. I think the, I was going to jot it out, but I'll have to wing it in real time here, is to make a motion to approve the, what did, what was the name of the presentation? The Friends of Alumni Field fundraising concept, subject to the superintendent acting as the school committee's agent for final approval. Seconded. That mean what you were looking for?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that I want to just throw it out to the superintendent because of the.
He's not. The superintendent, as the policy's written, has to come to us. If, if, nothing will happen without us knowing. It won't.
I understand that.
And, and the motion doesn't need to reflect that. That's implied in the rule.
Right, that's why I would say that I wouldn't expli, my, my thing is that it's not necessary to make.
Well, I wanted to make it explicit so that, so that, it codifies explicitly that they can't operate independently of the further concurrence of the superintendent.
Which they can't, I mean, they can't do.
I don't want ambiguity in the, in, in the approval for it. That, I mean, that was my purpose of reiterating it.
Good.
Did you have phase one in that motion? Initial.
I use the word initial, but I can use phase one.
So moved, or seconded. All right, motion's made. The second is there any further discussion? You have any, none? All those in favor?
And Dorothy, we can work with you to make sure you have the exact language afterwards.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Appreciate the time. I know it's long-winded, so thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Oh, thank you.
Me too.
Dr. Harrington, I got the notification about that email, and I was like, he, he remembered because they were here.
All right, grade six, Canterbury Lake Park Field Trip. Let's go to an outstate field trip.
My favorite word.
Ask permission.
I'm here on behalf of the Yonkers County Team to ask permission for the traditional sixth grade Canterbury Lake Park field trip at, in Salem, New Hampshire. It's an end-of-the-year team-building field trip. It's planned for June 21st with a rain date of June 22nd. The plan is to leave school at 8:15 in the morning on three buses and return by 3:00 in the afternoon.
All right, any questions on this? This is an annual field trip, it's been going on for a while.
Thanks for sending it.
Because it's an out-of-state field trip, we do have to have a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve the field trip.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor? All right. Close? All right, next, now we're on our old business, school calendar.
Yes, after we approved the calendar, we received a notice from DESI with our MCAS schedule for next year. The high school math, MCAS administration is on one of our half-PD Wednesdays. So as a result of this, our Director of Curriculum made a request to change that day from, or half date more correctly, from May 30th. For a second here. Where was that from? There it is, right here. From the, from May 23rd to May 25th, and that would be a half date. I'm hoping that that's just kind of an anomaly, it's never happened before, but hopefully, once they have this new schedule set, we may like that for many years.
Okay, and then we can work these days around.
Right.
What is a, we expect to be a standard MCAS schedule, where we can anticipate work length.
Right, we weren't thrilled about going with a Friday, but at the same time, when we looked at other alternatives, it seemed to be the best one for next year.
Do you need a motion, or is that information?
Because it's a calendar, we would, I would need a motion to approve the revised calendar as presented.
Okay. Make a motion to change the school calendar as presented to move the professional development day from May 23rd to May 25th.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor? All right. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. The next part of the agenda. Last meeting, we took a look at handbook approvals, and at that time, I had mentioned that we weren't really happy with the current responsible use of technology policy, we're in the middle of reviewing it. So we brought this to you this evening so that hopefully, we could include this in our handbooks. Just as clarification, this isn't a district policy, we have a separate district policy that covers responsible use. So this policy would be more specific to schools, it includes staff and students. In terms of students, the policy would be signed off in terms of their handbook. In terms of staff, we would have them review this policy with the other policies that are mandated that they review every year, and then they would sign off on those policies as well. Daryl had a chance to take a look at it and get some suggestions, those suggestions have been incorporated as well. As you can see, it's a significant improvement over the other policies that we had. And I say that delicately because a lot of things have happened in a number of years in terms of technology advancements within this district, and we just wanted to make sure that we were covered. And with the increased use of technology in the classroom and the increased reliance on social media, we felt that it should go in the handbooks prior to us starting our high school one-on-one program next fall. Any questions on the school-based policy?
The only comment I would have is that I think it is important that we revisit this on a fairly constant basis because the usage and the types of usage is evolving. Having said that, I think it's probably even more important that we continue to incorporate responsible use of technology into how we support social and emotional learning. Because a lot of the things, this is fairly cut and dried about, don't use somebody else's password to log in, et cetera, et cetera, which is necessary. But things about cyberbullying and inappropriate access to inappropriate images during the school day, that kind of thing, needs to be part of what we're just teaching kids to be good citizens. And then the last thing I would say is ultimately, the responsibility lies at home. We can't police them 24/7, which is basically effectively what some of that social media is for our students. So I would like to see us continue as an administration to, whenever we get a chance to dialogue with the students and the families about what our expectations are as a school district for how we use and implement, you know, technology and by extension, social media and software, that we take that opportunity to do so. I think we'll all be better off for it, not just as students and learning and achieving, you know, our educational goals, but just helping them navigate what can be very difficult waters.
Right, right. I mentioned at grad, there's a young lady, Liv Ledchy, from New Hampshire, nine years old, who is now world-renowned in speaking at leadership conferences on appropriate use of social media. And what was really powerful for me to see that is that we have somebody nine years old that understands how powerful social media is and how it can influence social structures. So I think what we're seeing already is a bit of a transformation in the younger grades, and that's because we're including it in our various curricula, and I think it's becoming more of a conversation within the home environment as well. So we are off to the right start, but there's a lot that still needs to be done, and it needs to be something that's constant. You can't ever assume that you're done with it because things are changing so quickly.
All right, do we need a motion on this?
Please. That would be great.
I'll make a motion to accept the school-level responsible use policies as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing not, all those in favor? All right. Close? No, thank you. Do your business.
In your package, you just have a prelude to the November MASC mass conference. I have to tell you, they put on great conferences, Daryl has had a chance to go on a number of occasions, and there's a lot of great topics for school committee members and superintendents. And it's also nice to be able to network with other school committee members, you can always share stories with each other and learn from each other. So if you ever have a chance in the fall to pop down for a day or two, I would highly recommend it.
And I appreciate you putting that in there, and anybody that wants to take a look at it, if there's something that jumps out at you and you want to participate, just let Kelly know, that'd be great.
And next up is the list of colleges that our graduates are attending. Again, it's always nice to.
Accepted and attending.
That's right, accepted and attending. And if you look at the red asterisks, that indicates where they are attending. And we have people that are attending, there is colleges throughout the nation, so it's not as if they're staying local, so to speak. And a few are venturing over into Canada as well. So very proud of.
You're proud of those ones.
Proud of all of them. But Montreal seems to have a few, and Toronto as well. Every now and again, they venture off to Halifax, but in Littleton, I have not seen anybody venture out west yet.
We had triplet boys that had dual citizenship, their mother was Canadian, and two of them ended up going to school in Canada.
Nice. Oh, great. In Maine, the University of Maine, strange how these connections are formed, but they used to recruit volleyball players from Canada. And for some reason, they ended up recruiting most of them from Western Canada, from the University of Regina and the University of Saskatchewan, which was kind of interesting, unknown to me until I arrived.
University of Maine is an excellent school.
They do. They do. So again, congratulations to our graduates and best of luck as they continue their educational journeys.
All right. We're on to the superintendent evaluation. Daryl, you want to lead us through this?
Yeah, let's see. I realized I didn't.
Would you like a copy?
I was going to quickly send it to Steve so I can put it up on.
Send it to me.
On the thing here, I realized I didn't CC him on that. Let's see, let me just get the email real quick here. Shoot, I think I sent you the right one. Surprise.
I'll let you know. That was just a trial run.
Oh, come on.
It's on the screen, Daryl.
Yeah, I just, well, I opened it and my viewer didn't present it well here, so, okay. All right, so let me, I'll just review what the process, did Mike have to leave?
Yes.
Oh, he did. There, is early, early in the school year, I met with the superintendent to set out the priority areas for the evaluation of the year here. And then, and then he sent out all of his data and self-evaluation parts to all the members of the school committee. Each member filled out their individual review. They emailed it to me, and I produced a composite of the inputs minus our newest member who wasn't here during the evaluation time there. And what I produced for tonight is a composite evaluation, I think fairly accurately summarizes everybody's input. This will be the first time everybody's seen it, so if there's any concerns, we can adjust the language here. But I think it faithfully represents all the individual members' inputs here. And I can just summarize it real easy here, is the entire board was exceptionally pleased with your performance this past year and rated you exceeded and exemplary in every category on it. And what we could do is, is we could walk through them at a summary level and talk about any highlights that individual members would like to point out there. So if we.
Just, the only other comment I'd like to make before we dive into that is this instrument is not ours anymore. We used to, when we first got involved, it was pre-educator evaluation that had been implemented across the state. And this conforms, this is the same type of thing that all of our educators, principals, administrators are all using. Obviously, the types of things that are being evaluated vary depending on what your role is in the district, but this is a standard instrument used across the board and across districts.
Right, so Steve, if you could page down to page four, it's standard one, instructional leadership there. And what I had done in the evaluation is, the ones highlighted in yellow represent the areas that we formally chose as focus areas for the evaluation. There, I think overall, there's 50 or so items within the whole evaluation instrument. We settled down to approximately 12, I think, to focus on. And that's actually the recommendation of DSE, not to try to evaluate against all of the individual standards there, but choose the ones that are significant to your district and use those as the evaluation criteria. And as highlighted in yellow here, under instructional leadership, there's instruction, the evaluation process, and data-informed decisions there. And my own personal observation here is, is I'm very pleased with our approach to using more rigor in our data analysis and decision-making as we're going. I know it's always good to have a gut feel that we need to improve in an area here, but making sure that we have the data to support that and making informed decisions makes it easier for us to make sure that we're driving towards the right areas as well as documenting those decisions there for the future and the current people involved.
Yeah, I agree. You know, some of the things that, when I was evaluating this, I actually saw in forwarded to the school committee and the superintendent article that I came across on the internet, that more testing might be better as long as it's the right kind of testing. It was assessments, you know. And I think that we've done a great job as a district with the superintendent's leadership on implementing assessments and using them to the, you know, the data, it's actual data that comes back to inform instruction, both at the classroom and building level, but also at the individual student level. We can continue to improve, I know we will, but I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're right there in moving forward on that. And that's definitely a reflection of the leadership of the superintendent. Any comments on that, or?
No, I mean, I think Daryl summed it up pretty well. I think we're all extremely happy, you know, but I think the direction that you're putting this district in, I think we're looking at success. I think it's, I'm interested to see how we do in the future because since you, over the past few years, you know, you've set a high standard and you continually strive to meet it, so I'm very pleased.
Thank you.
If you could go down to page five, it splits the two pages there. I don't know if you'd be able to get both in at the same time. So standard two is management and operations of the district, and we are focusing on environment, which is developing effective plans and procedures for the whole range of school needs and our fiscal systems primarily around the budget and then supporting the vision and, you know, expenditures. I've been always very impressed, we never have any surprises when it comes to our budget. And we might not always hit the exact targets, but it's not a surprise to the school committee, which I think speaks to the effectiveness also of the communications with the committee here on it. I noted, I like the vertical alignment that we're using, the vision to inform our budget priorities, to inform the instructional priorities within the schools, it makes it a little bit more clear for people on where we're focusing our things there, and we can tie the initiatives to the district vision.
All right, as someone who's been on the Budget Subcommittee since I got involved, it's amazing how little, what the proportion of discussion is actually about dollars in those meetings. And it's really, it's about what are we trying to do, why is it important? And this is the budget that we need to get that done. So it's really, the process and the goals and all the documentation that we have on what our mission is leads the process, not the pile of money that we may not be able to attain. That just informs how we're going to support what we're really talking about, which is the educational mission. And again, the superintendent, it's him and his management staff, primarily his business manager in this respect, that leaves out all that. It makes our job easy, and it really makes it enjoyable, it makes it, you know, interesting to me to understand, you know, why is this money so important? And they clearly are able to communicate that to us. One thing I would just point out, too, in the definition of environment, it talks about addressing a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. And to Daryl's point, not only do we not get surprises about the budget, but we're well-informed both in terms of, you know, day-to-day communication from the superintendent, but also the presentations that we get from him, from his admin team regarding safety, health, emotional, and social needs of the students. It's not just curriculum, and it's not just test scores, and it's not just which colleges they got into, there's a lot of other information that we get and that he makes available to us that helps us, you know, do our job. All right, moving on next.
Page six. Standard three is family and community engagement. Our focus was continued on communications and family concerns here. And again, I find the superintendent's as an effective communicator, both not just with the district, but, I mean, not just with us, but in the engagements I've gotten feedback from on parents there, I think always portrays the schools in a positive light. But at the same time, what I'll say is, and I don't mean this as a negative, I just said it there, I think he actively accepts and engages when there's criticisms of the school there in terms of trying to make sure that we actually deal with the underlying issues and not just put a Band-Aid on top of something here. And as I noted, I think in the write-up here, he also uses those conflict resolutions as a coaching opportunity with the staff. When things do get escalated to his level there, he uses the opportunity to go back to the staff to understand. When things do get escalated to his level there, he uses the opportunity to go back to the staff to understand why did it get escalated and was not able to be handled there in terms of his own staff development opportunities there.
Yeah, I'll reflect that, you know, being the chair to get to have a little bit more face-to-face time with the superintendent. And, you know, when I am, surprises me of something that's going on, it's really not, you know, this is what I did to solve the problem. He said, this is what I did to help my staff understand what their options were, and, you know, this is the decision that they were able to come to. So I think, you know, he's using those tough times as an opportunity to get his management team better, and that's important. The only thing I would point out is one of the emphasis here is on culturally proficient communication. So if you could just work on the way you pronounce some of those words, I think...
The Canadian accent is still...
Oh, you love that.
I try and write them out.
She actually does.
And then the final area, page eight, there is professional culture. And it's again, one emphasizing continuous learning, shared vision with all stakeholders, and managing conflict. And I think that one of the, I think, leading by example with Kelly pursuing the completion of his doctorate degree is the first level of, you know, example of, leadership by example, I'll get that out here in terms of demonstrating to everybody that your own learning doesn't stop. It continues. And pushing that culture again down through the district.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I revisit or touch on fairly continuously is education and delivery of education in the United States has changed dramatically over the last, like, five to 10 years, much more than it did in the previous decades, really, prior. And it's going to continue to be that way. And the superintendent always is successful at getting us through that, but he actually relishes the opportunity to do it. And we're better off as a district for his enthusiasm and the way he can communicate that enthusiasm down through his staff to say, this is going to work. It's going to, we're all going to be better off for it. Let's make this worthwhile to us and not struggle with it or feel like it's being put upon us. And I think that, you know, he does a great job of leading the district through that. And I think it's a reflection of, I think it's easier to do in a smaller district, but it's not easy to do. It's just easier than if you were doing it, you know, in a larger district. And I think he does a great job of it, and I appreciate the benefit that we're getting for that.
So I recognize this is the first time many of you have seen the composite put together. But again, just because of open meeting law, there was really not a lot of opportunity for discuss... And there was no opportunity for discussion of it. So if there's any corrections that we need, we can incorporate them here. But like I said, I think this generally reflects...
Yeah, I'm fine with it. You know, Mike did on his way out just tell me that he was fine with the summary that you put together. So it's fine. Matt, what do you think?
Yep, I think it's great.
So with that, I, I'm not sure we need a motion to approve the evaluation?
We have to sign it.
We have to sign it, so... All right. So I think that would, that would affect the completion of the evaluation.
Thank you very much for your feedback. And again, it's been a pleasure working with the school committee in this community for a number of years. And I look forward to new challenges and celebrations next year as well.
All right. So we're through all the new business. Do we have any other new business?
No, we're good.
All right. For the second opportunity for interested citizens?
We lost them all again.
We'll quickly go through subcommittee reports, PMBC.
We had a posting problem, so we didn't, weren't able to meet last night. So no update.
No update on the budget subcommittee and policies. We're good for now and really kind of just closing out the school year.
The only thing I didn't mention is, I hope you're not wondering why you have a book in front of you. We had talked about this at an earlier school committee meeting. The admin team, or leadership team more correctly, is taking a look at this book this summer, most likely to succeed. We had a previewing of a documentary at the high school and talking to Principal Harrington. We're going to bring that presentation back again. And we have our PTA and our, some of our leadership team at the school and the advisory committee at the high school excited about, you know, really taking a look at what our high school should look like in the future. So I thought it would be a great idea as a school committee if we looked at this at our retreat as well. There are seven chapters. I figured we could just all share the seventh chapter as a way of facilitating dialogue. And if you wouldn't mind, you can either let me know what chapter you would like to discuss sometime. It doesn't have to be right away. Our retreat is in August. Or if not, if I don't hear definitively from any of you, I'll just assign chapters one to six, and I'll do it that way. No, it doesn't mean you don't have to read the whole book though.
Full moon is forearmed. You can pick your poison or get it fed to you.
Exactly. And this is a great book.
So that's our homework for the summer.
That is, sorry.
Definitely if there is something that you feel like you would be more comfortable or enjoy summarizing for us all, jump at the chance. Otherwise, you'll get something. And you got what, do we pick a day for yet?
We did. It's August 24th.
You know how book groups go. Don't show up on August 24th, like flipping through the pages and walking out of the parking lot.
You were very kind to Mike. I mean, you could have assigned him two chapters.
He doesn't know that.
Also just remember, you're not me and the students that have to read three or more books and are all being tested on the first week. You guys got it easy. A nice discussion. No one's going to judge you if you get the question wrong.
We all graduated high school. We've done it.
We judge ourselves. We hold ourselves to a high standard.
Are you telling me I'm being too soft on them?
No, I think you're, it's just a nice way to ease back into like real work. It's just like a nice discussion.
All right. Do we have any other business or smart aleck remarks?
This makes it to two meetings that I've stayed all the way through for, so... No, no, I'm just like, I thought I was going to have one, like, for the whole...
We do need an executive session.
So do you want to, so do you want to vote Kelly's contract after that session? Do we need to do that in open session?
I don't know yet. I don't think I do.
All right, so we won't come back?
We will not come back to open session.
All right, so we'll schedule a separate discussion of that. All right. So I move to adjourn to executive session for purpose of contract negotiations with the LEA and superintendent contracts.
With no intention...
With no intention to return to open session.
Motion made a second it. This is a roll call. Oh, sorry. Is that a second?
Second.
Can you go roll call vote, Jen? Daryl?
Yep.
Yep? Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your summer. Please have a good summer, but have a safe summer.